All right, now being 5:45, I'll call the November 7th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectment Order. Pursued to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via your computer, via audio, or both, or video, or both. And the information for joining the meeting has been provided on our agenda. If you'd prefer to call in, that information was also provided on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website, town.plimpton.us, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Specific information and our general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can also be found on the Town of Plimpton's website. So having said that, welcome Barry. You're the first one on our agenda and we're going to be talking about, we're going to review the special town meeting with, talk about logistics, the warrant articles, motion language, and anything else you wanted to discuss with us.
Cool, thank you. Well, I saw the, let me just start as far as logistics go, and I'm going to try to set something up with Rich and do another quick thing on, on local cable, just going over the warrant with people before we go to the meeting like I did for town meeting. This is obviously going to be a quick one, it's only seven articles. We're just going to meet in the auditorium, like the old days, just have the one room. We won't need the extra AV setup and all that with the gym and yada, yada. And hopefully we'll be able to stay with that moving forward to our ATMs as well. I had talked to Liz about, about the motions and asked that they just read something like, I moved the article. So I appreciate that you did it that way. Somehow it got to the point where whoever made the motions were pretty much reading back what I had already read when I read the warrant. So this'll, this'll be a lot cleaner. The first article, I had exchanged email with Liz this afternoon, and I understand that the motion that you make is going to, you know, cite the sources of the funding, which makes sense. And then there's going to be another provision about kind of getting started, getting some money to get started, setting up the, making the land usable. And so that's great that that's going to be on a separate handout. I asked Liz and she thought this was doable to kind of just highlight in the handout, highlight the differences from what's in the warrant because it's such a lengthy article. I think if it's easy for people to see what the, how the motion differs slightly from what's in the warrant, it's going to make everything more transparent and they'll have that visual in front of them. So after the motion's made, I'm going to, I'm not going to read the article. I'm going to let the motion be made, which pretty much completely rereads the article. And then I'm just going to point out what those differences are that they see highlighted in their handout, just so everybody understands because it is such a huge article. Does that sound good to you guys?
Makes sense.
Okay. Other than that, I think this all looks pretty straightforward. Liz, I guess we should set something up with Peter, maybe the week before, just to get up to Denit and get our i's dotted and t's crossed.
Yes, definitely. I will take care of that.
Okay, great. And I know that's Thanksgiving week, so I guess maybe at the very beginning of that week of Thanksgiving week or the end of the prior week would make most sense for whatever people, whatever people's schedules have. I'm pretty open that time.
Okay, I will take care of that. I'll send something out to everybody.
Okay.
And as far as the motions go, did you want to run through real quick just who from the Board of Selectmen is planning to make said motions?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, I'll just, it's okay with me just to like wait for somebody to speak. But yeah, if you guys want to put names to them, that's fine.
So I have down Mark Russo for Article 1. And then Articles 2 and 3 will need a BOS member for because they're sponsored by the Treasurer and she is not a town resident. So I don't know if one of the board members wants to take 2 and 3.
John, do you want to take those or would?
Sure, I'm fine. I'll take them.
Awesome. Thanks, John.
Article 4 is regarding the fire chief. I'm not sure if that's awkward for him to be making a motion for an article about himself. So maybe one of you, John, do you want to do that one as well?
Sure. Yeah, that should be the BOS, I think.
And then Article 5, Alan Wheelock is planning to make the motion. If any questions arise, he would like me to give a brief explanation.
Okay.
And then Article 6, I believe Wendy indicated that Ethan or Jocelyn would be making that motion. And then Article 7, I'm assuming John Wilkinson will handle that. And if not, John Trainor would probably be a logical backup for that.
That's fine.
It's on town properties.
Would you, Christine, would you like to do 4? I don't have to monopolize it.
Yeah, I'll take 4.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is the person that makes the motion the one that then gives a synopsis of what the article's about or speaks in favor of it?
Yeah, usually, I mean, the way I, I would like it to, to be run is I'll read the article. Someone says, you know, I moved the article as printed or as read, however you want to say that. And then once we get a second and I open the floor for discussion, it would make sense to me for the mover of the article to give a quick, less than three-minute explanation of what it's about, what it is you're trying to do. What's, what's the purpose of this article?
I think that will make sense for all of them. I would say that 2 and 3, the Treasurer would be prepared to speak too. And Alan and I discussed that I would give a short explanation for number 5.
Okay. That works for me.
Great.
We want to run down the special? That is the special. Oh, I'm sorry, that is the special. Confused. Well, you, it's what you guys call in a meeting in November, you know? I need extra pay for this. I have to get my dry cleaning done twice a year now.
And polish up your sneakers.
Check.
Excellent. So Barry, do you need anything more from us?
No, ma'am.
All right, very good. So we will see you at the Denit on the 30th, ready for town meeting. Thank you very much. Good night. All right. So next item on our agenda is a discussion of Pay as You Throw. This is program and information review, discussion and possible vote by the Board of Selectmen. And the way that I think it might be the most effective and efficient way to, to run through this would be to have people who are in opposition to the program to speak first and then those that support it. I don't think we need Todd really to do a presentation, do we? I mean, we've, the presentation is on our social media page, it's on the town website. He's here to answer questions we may have, but I don't think we necessarily need to have his presentation. Okay, all right, very good. And thank you, Todd. Thank you for, for joining us tonight. So it would be helpful just for meeting minutes if people were to identify themselves and, and before you speak. So anyone, we'll start with people who would like to speak in opposition of moving to a Pay as You Throw program. All right, is there anyone that wanted to speak in opposition of going to Pay as You Throw?
I don't know. Russell, did you want to say something? I noticed you lit up, but I couldn't hear you.
No, Russell?
You're not coming through, Russell. Do you want, Christine, do you want Selectmen to, or you want to let the residents talk first?
Why don't we let the residents?
Okay.
Talk first.
Give Russell one more chance. Russell?
Sure.
We'd love to hear from you.
Maybe he should try calling back in.
Yeah.
And then we'll take him when he gets back into the meeting. Okay, anyone who would like to speak in favor of the program?
I speak in opposition?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
This is Debbie Anderson.
Hi, Deb.
Hi. I'm having, I'm having a problem understanding what the benefit is if our transfer station attendants are not able to enforce the rules of the transfer station at the time, other than to politely suggest. It seems to me it's going to be very difficult to ask them to enforce Pay as You Throw if all they can do is politely suggest that people use Pay as You Throw bags. I don't understand the difference between making it somehow mandatory that people recycle, not throw cardboard that's all broken down right into the dumpster, not...
She was, you know, down the, the outside stairs, holding railing. And she went to turn, Ben, she said, and the railing just broke. And, and she fell down because the railing broke.
Liz, I wonder if you could mute everyone except Deb? Okay, perfect. All right, go ahead, Deb.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering if our transfer station attendants don't have the authority to do anything other than politely suggest that people follow the rules that are in place. And that's what Aunt Moran told me at, at the transfer station as I was a victim of being bombed by somebody dumping in a 30-gallon drum that was not bagged. Everything is supposed to be bagged. And the dust and muck came back in my face because they were on the other side. And then after they did that, I was stunned. They started shoveling in cardboard that was all flat, should have been recycled, wasn't recycled. There is no, and, and nobody did a thing. Art was standing next to me, talking to me, and he says, we, we can't do anything. They, they don't pay any attention. How are we going to make sure that they can, how are we going to make sure that they can do something about enforcing Pay as You Throw rules if they can't enforce the rules that we have in place for, to use the transfer station?
The bags will kind of be like a sticker in essence. If there is no trash, if the trash isn't in the appropriate bag, you won't be able to use the facilities, much like if you didn't have a sticker.
They'll only be able to politely suggest that you might want to go get a bag.
Well, the, the rules would be changing and the transfer station would no longer be allowed to accept conventional trash bags. It would have to be in a Pay as You Throw bag. Otherwise, it would be the same response as if you didn't have a sticker and you'd be turned around and told to leave.
The transfer station rule says that you may not put in cardboard, you may not put in various things, and yet the transfer station attendant told me that they are only allowed to politely suggest.
Correct. And this is going to help correct that situation because the trash that's going to be going in the compactors will be in Pay as You Throw bags. And, and the recyclables, if they do decide to put them in the Pay as You Throw bag, they'll be paying mainstream trash waste prices.
How do we get them to enforce the rules? Will they have the power to enforce the rules?
Much like if you don't have a current sticker, we will have the power to enforce those rules. If a resident comes in without a sticker, a valid sticker, we turn them around. If the trash comes in, in the wrong bag, they will be turned around. It gives the ability to do that.
But they don't have the ability now to turn somebody away or to issue a fine or to say? I think, I think that we're asking them to do some, I think we're creating a whole new, a whole new platform of rules and regulations and costs that we, the, the residents are going to have to bear because the people in charge don't have the authority to do the job that they have been asked to do.
That's part of changing the rules so they have the ability to enforce.
Make it work just the way we have it?
Not really. You'd need somebody to, you'd have to change everything and it still wouldn't work. The, the point of this is to help cover the cost of trash. Right now, if we have to increase the, the price of trash and it goes to wage, you know, wage and pro, raise and appropriate through taxes, people that have at-home trash services, their taxes will be increased to pay for the trash that they're not throwing out through our service.
I'll let somebody else speak. I think I've said, I think I've made my point.
Someone raise their hand, Christine, Scott D.
Okay, Scott, did you want to speak against moving to Pay as You Throw? You'll just have to unmute yourself, Scott.
There we go. Thanks. So this is Scott Devonshire. So I did just want to voice my opposition just to the Pay as You Throw, just from a different perspective. I understood that there was an option if we wanted to increase the sticker price to cover the increased cost for the trash removal. And I understand what the gentleman from the Highway Department was talking about, whereas folks who are using outside trash services, you know, would have to pay via their taxes if there was an increase, you know, across the board. But I don't think that's really anything too different than folks who don't use emergency services. Everybody pays for it. It's a town service that's being offered. There's so few town services that are offered to the community. This is just another one that, living in the community, we, you know, are all part of this system. You know, if you don't have kids that go to the Denit, you still have to pay for your taxes that support that, those programs. So, you know, this is just another one of those programs. As a resident and as someone who does use the transfer station, you know, I would rather pay more for my transfer station sticker than have to worry about, do I have the right bag? You know, how many bags can I bring this week? I do think that there should be more incentives for people to recycle and, you know, move in that direction to, to lower our burden. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I, I think Pay as You Throw is just going to drive a lot of people away from using the transfer station because the, the, the burden is really going to go on the people who use it responsibly. And the folks who have not been using it responsibly, I think, are going to move to a different sort of system. Like, I don't know, I'd have to do a pretty strong analysis now of, well, what's my consumption? How many bags do I throw away this week? Is it going to cost me double or triple what I pay? Or, you know, maybe it would cost less, but I doubt it in my case. And then, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of people in the same boat and I'd rather just see, you know, increase the dump sticker. It, that just seems like the simplest solution to me as far as what I think is best for the town and best for the transfer station.
Thank you, Scott. I don't know, did you really, there wasn't really a question that you had specifically in there? I know that John has done, John Trainor has done some work with the Board of Health and, and Highway to try to do an analysis. I think we can absolutely have him talk about that after we get a little bit further along. So we can talk about that, Scott, after we get all of the input from residents.
Thanks, Christine. And I don't know that I had a specific question. I just wanted to voice my opposition just because I don't think it's a good idea. I think there are other ways that we could do this. You know, I think that, you know, increasing the sticker fee would be one way to do it. And then, you know, see if, after a year of the higher fees, if that, you know, cuts down on the waste and kind of the bad actors who are really driving some of this.
All right, thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against Pay as You Throw?
Here's somebody under the name iPhone who has their hand up.
Okay, if you could identify yourself and the floor is yours.
Christine, I think it's me, Maureen Doyle.
Oh, hi, Maureen. Yep.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
So my question is, does the town get any cut in the sale of the bags? Do we get any kind of kickback from the sale of the bags? Because we have to go to Walmart or Stop &amp; Shop, right?
How about, can I defer to someone from Highway, either Colleen or Rob, to talk about that one?
Colleen, are you on? If not, I'll do it. The cost, the, the cost of the bag is to cover the price of the trash. The town doesn't get a kickback from the bag. The bag is just to cover the price of trash.
Right. So that, to me, makes more of a burden on the residents. I agree with Scott that I would much rather pay a higher sticker to use the transfer station than to have to go out of my way to buy a specific bag. And I also was going to comment on the fact that we all sort of share the tax burden. When you don't have children to go to the Denit or Silver Lake, you still contribute to your taxes and you don't complain about it. I think we're making more, way more difficult process for the residents. So I'm definitely strongly opposed to it.
Thank you for sharing that, Maureen. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak against Pay as You Throw?
Christine?
Yep.
It's Colleen. I had to figure out, I had to figure out how to unmute.
Okay.
I just wanted to, the price of the bags are approximately 35 cents. We're charging 250, which makes the difference between what we pay for the bags and what the people pay for the bags goes to cover the expense that we're not collecting. So that we, we aren't making money on the bags, but it's covering some of our trash removal costs. And the reason, the bags, kind of, if you don't want to recycle, you're paying for not recycling by having to put it in your bag and dispose of the bag you're paying for. Versus if you do pay, have the bags and you recycle, you're not, you're going to diminish the amount of trash you throw. So it forces the recycling.
Colleen, are we only selling these bags at Walmart and Stop &amp; Shop or would they be sold locally as well?
No, they're not being sold at Walmart. They're being sold at Stop &amp; Shop, Shaw's, Market Basket, the Highway Department, and Kang's. I haven't approached Kang yet, but I'm going to ask him if he, he would be willing to sell them there.
Would there be any way to sell them at the transfer station too?
The transfer station is going to take some of the cases so that they would be available at the transfer station as well.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
But the, the drop-off deliveries, we only have a choice of five. And that would make six. So they'll take some of the cases that I have from Highway.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm going back on mute.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to speak against Pay as You Throw? All right, Liz, do you see any hands?
I do not.
All right. Is there, are there people on the call that would like to speak in favor of Pay as You Throw?
Is it for residents only or do you want me to?
Residents only, residents only, Todd.
I'll hold up.
Yeah, hold off. All right, any hands, Liz? No. Okay. All right. Todd, did you want to, was there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of numbers in here just to make sure that everyone understands what is happening. You know, and let me preface this by saying, you know, the state's in a bind with, with solid waste at this point. We have approximately three active landfills in the state of Massachusetts. Maine just threw us out. Maine is not accepting trash from us anymore. We have a couple of burn facilities that turn it into energy and there is a moratorium on expanding those. So at some point here, they're going to have to figure out another solution. And the best thing they can come up with is throw it on a train and send it to Ohio. That's going to be a little more expensive than keeping it in state. So those rates that you're paying now, they're going to be low in a few more years, okay? A few more years, it's, it's going to go sky high. We have a really nice map at the state that we do every year according to who reports their solid waste. Your average weight is 1,926 pounds per household with your current program. That's about 2,000 pounds per res, per household coming out of Plimpton. An average Pay as You Throw town across the state is at 1,000. It's 1,066. So when you start calculating, and I know John ran some numbers on this, your savings of solid waste is going to go sky high. The savings is going to be fantastic if you do go Pay as You Throw. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One is with Pay as You Throw, this evens the playing field. Number one, you're paying 220, 240 for a sticker right now. You can throw as much trash away as you want, or you can throw one bag a week as, if you want. What happens is that person that's paying, that's throwing one bag a week is subsidizing the trash for all of those other people that are throwing a truckload every other day in there. You're paying for their trash. You're not paying for yours at this point. Now, what's going to happen is those sticker prices are going to go up. There isn't a single contract that has been done over the last two years, three years, with a lower rate than they had before. Everything has gone up and we see it in our groceries, we see it in our fuel, we see it everywhere. This trash is the same thing. It's going to continue to go up. Your sticker price is going to go up and you're still going to pay for your neighbors that are throwing, they're abusing the system. I'll just put it that way. They are abusing your transfer station and you're paying for it. So with Pay as You Throw, it's nothing to fear as far as, oh, I've got to go out of my way to get a bag. No, what we're trying to do is keep that as convenient as possible. You have to go get groceries, you have to go get gas, you're going to have to go to the transfer station. That's where you're going to get the bags. You're already getting trash bags. You're just need a different color. That's all it is. It's a totally different color. It's a standard color that the attendants at the Highway Barn can see, clear as day. If they don't have the trash in a bag, it does not go in that compactor. They're going to have to take it and find another home for it. From my understanding, there are people that sell those stickers to, or they give stickers to outside residents. You're paying for their trash. I don't see how that's fair. As a resident in Barnstable, if I had someone coming into my town throwing a bunch of trash away, I'd be upset and I'd voice my opinion. I wish we had Pay as You Throw here. So a, a couple really major things to look at when it comes to this. It's a unit-based pricing, just like heating your home, water. You know, everyone needs water. It's the same thing. Except what you're paying for in that bag is the trash that you generate. You're not paying for anyone else's, you're paying for yours. So it really, it's able to control your cost when it comes to the disposal side of things. Just like if you're turning your electricity off in the day because you don't need it. You're controlling those costs. The other big thing with this is your sticker price with Pay as You Throw is going to go down drastically because we don't need to cover the cost of everyone else's trash with that sticker price. So your sticker, your sticker fee next year might be $300. For the next year, it's going to be 50 or 40 if you're, if, if you're over a certain age. So you're going to save that cost there, but then you're also using less bags. So if you're using a bag a week paying $50 a year, you're probably only going to spend 120, 130 bucks a year on your trash as opposed to 240 right now. So this is going to do a lot of stuff. It's going to eliminate the illegal dumping there that's happening. You know, the people that abuse the system, it's going to make it way more fair and you're able to control your costs. The way I see it, and I think, you know, I've talked to the board about this, I've given a couple of presentations so far to the town. As soon as everybody really understood this and I was able to alleviate their fears on this, it was one of those programs where they said, kind of, oh, why don't we do this? Why haven't we done it yet? So it's, it's really, it's a financial decision to move stuff into the recycling bin. And you get financially rewarded, rewarded for doing that. It's also going to keep out a lot of that, a lot of the trash you don't want in your compactor because you're paying for it, either way. So that's my spiel.
All right, Todd, we had a meeting on Saturday. John, Mark and I, it was about affordable housing and we ended up talking about Pay as You Throw. And there were a lot of questions about the need for education, about what can and cannot be recycled. Is that something that you could? Is that something that you could help us with down the road? Having some kind of hands-on training so that people know, so that they can recycle as much as possible to keep their costs down?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the state spent close to a million dollars on a website called recycle-smartma.org. And if you go on there and you type in what kind of a material it is that you're trying to recycle, it will tell you if it is or is not recyclable. It'll also give you options. We also are right, I think we just finished and put up another website, which used to be one that would tell you about hard-to-handle materials, like textiles and oil, stuff that's not the norm, and how to get rid of that stuff as well. So there's a lot of stuff that the state's done to create these educational programs. And we can definitely help you out with that. You guys are also getting a lot of grant money from the state that you can use for those education programs as well. And we've got a ton of literature about it. You can make signs, you can do all kinds of fun stuff. And we've already got everything created. You just have to order it, so.
All right, thank you. Is Russell Kierstad, is he on and available to speak? Because we couldn't hear you earlier, Russ.
It looks like he's muted, but there's somebody with the name RFF with their hand up.
Okay. All right, the RFF, would you like to speak?
Hi, this is Tori Devonshire. I just had a couple of questions about the program.
Sure, go ahead.
So to the gentleman that was just speaking, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, but you're talking about how currently, you know, we're paying for these so-called abusers of the transfer station. How are residents who don't have a sticker paying for these abusers? Isn't it really just anyone who's purchasing a sticker currently?
Yeah, that's correct. So if you're utilizing the transfer station, you're subsidizing the cost for someone else that's using it, that's abusing it. If you're not using the transfer station, from what I heard tonight, was there are some taxes that come out to help fund it. With pay as you throw, that program should cover the entire cost of running that transfer station, at least on pretty much every other pay as you throw program. The cost of the sticker and the cost of the bags cover your administration costs, you know, your recycling cost, your hauling, and your disposal of those, of the materials coming out of there. So a true pay as you throw program should cover all of its own costs and not have to dip into the taxpayers' money.
Okay, but essentially, this is only affecting people that currently use the transfer station. So anyone that's paying for, you know, private disposal, they're unaffected by this whatsoever. So really, this is only hurting the residents of the town. And if the cost of the bag to the town is only 35 cents a piece, you know, as a family, I mean, if you take the estimate of four bags a week, you're paying, you know, eight some odd dollars a week, which, you know, is $450 a year over what the cost of the bags is to the town. So it makes much more sense, as a resident who currently uses the station, I'd much rather pay $360 for a sticker and have an increased fee than end up paying, you know, $450, $500 a year to purchase bags and limit, you know, what I can throw away. Because there's already limits on what can be recycled, you know, as-is. And so we're recycling as much as we can. But I'm really not interested in having my, you know, cost of waste disposal double or triple. And it's only affecting our household instead of, you know, all of the residents of this small town. My other concern is if this drives residents away from using the station, and the cost to operate the station in the future is more than what the town is taking in, are we looking at the transfer station potentially closing? Because I think, you know, this is something that's probably going to weigh heavily on residents, you know, as far as their output of costs, and, you know, may push more people to private trash disposal.
Rob, did you want to take that?
I know Colleen did call noon today to get a price on.
Yeah, I did, Rob. Let me just grab the numbers.
Thank you.
I called noon, and their private hauling is $47 a month. And they provide a 95-gallon trash bin and a $95, a 95-gallon recycle container. And that would be, at our pricing, three of our large bags per week, 33-gallon bags times three, which is actually 99, not 95, or 750 a week. And that would be 3255 a month, 52 weeks divided by 12. So it's less than the private hauling. And then they don't take batteries, appliances, metal, tires, medical waste, TV monitors, and propane tanks, mattresses, refrigerators, air conditioners, or anything containing CFCs, so that they'd have to find alternative ways to dispose of that.
If someone were to purchase a sticker at $65, though, and then did the private disposal, I mean, $35 a month is going to be less, I mean, for personally my family, than purchasing bags. For $65 a year, we could still, you know, utilize the transfer station for all of those appliances and other things, though, right?
Yeah, I have no idea what you're throwing away, but I'm just going by the number of gallons of bags per bag, per.
Sure.
Per month that equal what the private hauling would be.
Yeah, so four bags a week for 52 weeks is about $450 over the cost of the bags that a resident would pay.
Well, then 95-gallon trash bag would equal three of our bags, not four.
All right, and I think the, Rob, you can confirm whether this is an accurate statement or not, but I believe that the cost of trash is going up every year. And that if we were to raise the sticker next year, there's a very good possibility that every year, the cost is going to go up exponentially because the cost for us to get rid of the trash is continuing to go up at a very fast clip. And the fact that some of these facilities are no longer taking the trash too is becoming problematic or expensive to get rid of trash. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Okay.
This time last year, we were just under about $8,000 a month for trash. This time this year, it's about $13,000 a month for trash. So it's a big increase just in one year, and it's going to continuously go up at minimum 3% every year.
All right, thank you, Rob. All right, anyone else that has questions or would like to speak on this?
Could I just ask?
Sure, Deb.
Would this affect payroll at all? Would it mean that we would have less, fewer attendance? The need for fewer attendance at the transfer station? Are there any savings there?
No, you'd still need the two people to run the compactors. There is four compactors and two bins that do need to be monitored, along with cans, mercury products, TVs, ACs, mattresses. They do need the two people there just to make sure everything runs pretty smoothly.
But they have three people there often?
If you come during shift change, you might see three people there. Or if you come during, like, the beginning of the year when the stickers are being paid, the old stickers are being paid, and the new ones are being active, that's when they'll have the third person. But generally, no. I mean, if you see three people there, you're probably there at shift change for them because they only work like four hours per.
All right, so it would, so it would essentially run the same as it is now, only the color of the bags has changed. So that, and if someone tries to throw in trash that is not in the appropriate bag, what happens?
They can't throw that trash bag in there, same as if they didn't have a sticker. They wouldn't be allowed to use the facility with that specific bag. If the rest of the bags were colored, that specific bag would have to stay.
Okay, I think that it's just going to be very difficult to enact, and I think it's going to be difficult to monitor. And I think that we're just going to end up all paying, paying a lot of money for bags and not really have much of a good end result. We need to have something that's going to be a deterrent to people who are not recycling, and we need to have clear, clear rules about what we can recycle. I was standing at the recycling for plastics about to throw in a black tray from a frozen dinner that had gone through the dishwasher. It was clean, throw it in. No, they don't want that. They want white. I don't know what to throw in.
That's where that website Todd was talking about would come in handy. You could be able to research and self-educate in a manner so you could learn what can be recycled and what can't be.
I don't think that it's my job to self-educate. I think it's the department's job to put out the information that we need so that we know what we can throw, so that we don't have to go down there, and we don't have to worry. We can look at the number on it and say, oh gee, if it's a five, I can recycle it. If it's a two, I can.
Part of this would be improving some signage to make it a little more clear for everyone. If you're accepting recyclables, we can list numbers and stuff, and people can learn, or we can educate them somehow on what the number on the bottom of the plastic carton actually means.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed, Deb. We would need to do a much better job educating people about what can and cannot be recycled. Agreed. That would be an important component of this. I think that's kind of been the missing piece to a lot of these discussions is people just aren't aware of really what they can and cannot recycle, whether things have to be cleaned out. We really need to do a, if and when we go with this program, we need to do a much better job of educating the public and making it easy.
Whether we go with the program or not.
We can.
Right, absolutely, absolutely, regardless.
Christine, just, oh, sorry, Rob. Just a couple observations. Would it be helpful if Colleen went over the two proposed bag sizes and the prices for those? Because I think people might be under the impression that it's only the very large bags that would be available. And there is an option for your regular kitchen size. So I thought that that would be helpful maybe to review. And then we also have a question in the chat from Jeanette, and it says, impact, if any, on town budget with and without pay as you throw?
Good questions. All right, so why don't we take Colleen first to talk about the cost of the bags and the sizes?
Okay, the small bags, the kitchen-size bags, 15-gallon bags, and they're $1.50. The large bags are 33-gallon bags, and they're $2.50.
Right, right.
And I believe they're going to self-packaged them in packages of five.
Packages of five. Okay, and those are the only two sizes?
Those are the only two sizes.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Okay. Rob, can you talk about the impact to the transfer station with and without pay as you throw?
Pay as you throw is going to help with the finances. The trash that goes in the bag is paid for. If we don't go that route, we're going to be seeing at minimum a 3% increase every year. Two years ago, they made a 25% increase jump, and it's followed suit. It's going to go up, unfortunately. And there's not much we can really do. We're kind of bound to pay these prices. If people do recycle, the price of trash would go down. I think most recyclables, about $90 a ton right now, or mainstream waste is $180 a ton. So you're paying almost double to get rid of what can be recycled at half the price.
And Rob, I believe the cost, or what the town is being reimbursed on all of these has gone down significantly as well, that we used to get money back on the cardboard and the plastic, where those have been significantly reduced this past year.
Yeah, the price of recycle goes up and down, much like the price of scrap metal. Sometimes it can be profitable, sometimes it costs. Our scrap metal bin, even with the price high, now that we have fuel charges and stuff, we're getting short money on the return of that.
Okay, so they're really not helping a lot to recover any costs through the recycling program at this point? It's just keeping the trash that's going in the compactor, that those costs down?
Yes, it keeps the cost down. I believe there's a small annual grant we can get that'll help. I mean, it's small, but it helps facilitate repairs to the transfer station that would otherwise have to be spent by the town. Todd, you got anything maybe you can help me on this?
Yeah, with those grants, it's about, let's see, I think you're at like 600 a point. So there'd be five points. You're looking at three grand right there. So that's the extra three grand that the transfer station can use every year for enhancements, for education. The town can use for education, but anything to do with diversion, reuse, recycling. So, yeah, the grant is a big piece of this too, so.
And there is a larger grant to help implement a program?
Yeah, you've actually already been awarded that, so that helps cover the cost, a majority of the cost of the bags, I should say, half or so, something like that, depending on what your order size is, but it does help with the implementation.
Okay.
The initial purchase price, the grant that's been issued is $8,300.
All right, thank you, Colleen. All right, there was also a question that in the event we were, people were to not, no longer use the transfer station because of the cost of pay as you throw, and they went to private, is there a possibility that the transfer station would be shut down?
I don't foresee that. I don't foresee that happening. I can't see, I can't see that many people turning away from the transfer station. Yes, we might lose some customers, but there's a good chance that they're going to pay more for at-home trash service and still not be able to get rid of everything that they can at our transfer station.
Well, and that's a good point, that the private trash removal is going to continue to go up as a result of all the constraints with getting rid of trash as well, so that will be impacted. And I think we're still pretty much the cheapest game in town with regard to getting rid of trash.
Correct, and we, believe it or not, we are trying to keep it that way.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Could I just?
Sure, go ahead, Deb.
Todd just mentioned a grant that we've already gotten for this program. So we've already accepted a grant for this program, but it hasn't been approved yet.
So there was an initial grant to do research, to allow me to help the town out with doing some initial research. And I think it was originally like 80 hours worth of work of my time through the state to help, you know, look at the program that you currently have, analyze it, and then come back with what a possible solution would look like. And then there's a second grant, which was applied for, which was the implementation, which covers the cost of the bags. I don't think the paperwork's been signed yet, but it has already been awarded. We did file for that just in preparation for this, in the event that this does occur. It can always be turned down. Any grant through the state can be turned down. It's like, nope, 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 no harm, no foul, so. But there's always other grants that are associated with this too. There's a whole nother program that you guys are already getting awarded grant money for, it's for your current program, which is fantastic. You guys are running a great program, so.
A good program, but we're accepting twice as much trash from each of our.
I'm trying to raise my hand.
Okay, Michelle, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to figure out, I have my father here with me too. Just a question, so if we do the pay-per-bag, are we going to have to also pay to recycle as well? Like, is there, because I was trying to read, because there was a separate sticker price in the, what I was reading for recycling.
No, you will not have to pay extra to recycle. Recycling will always be free. The recycle sticker you saw is for the people that just use our transfer station for recycling. They have their other means of trash removal.
And that's for access into the transfer station, so they, the attendants know that they're residents?
Correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, John or Mark, did you want to speak on this?
Sure, glad to. I'm really glad for the opportunity. There have been several over the last few weeks to hear from citizens and hear their concerns, and glad for the opportunity tonight for these questions or concerns to be raised. As far as I'm concerned, the key issue in this is fairness. Scott had mentioned along the way, the. Scott had mentioned along the way, the incentive to recycle. That's what this thing is all about. It encourages people to recycle. It actually encourages people to maybe generate less solid waste to begin with. It feels to me this is the only fair way to do it. If households are gonna generate a lot of solid waste, they should pay more. Equally, more importantly, maybe, households that are able to recycle, that generate less waste to begin with, should pay less. Overall, I am convinced that this is gonna save most citizens, not all, but most, a significant amount of money. I'm convinced it's gonna save the town a lot of money. Maybe most importantly, it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for the town. It's the right thing to do for the citizens. And it's the right thing to do for the planet. One other relatively minor point, but I've been thinking about a lot is if we go to if we don't do this and we go to significantly increased sticker prices to cover the cost of the solid waste disposal. If we don't do that, I think we're gonna be up to three hundred and fifty dollars this year. I can easily imagine a sticker without this program being five hundred dollars soon. One of the great things about this program is households, particularly those kind of up against it as far as a budget and cash flow. This is gonna spread out the cost over the whole year instead of having to come in in January or whenever and lay out five hundred dollars. So I, I'm comfortable that we've had a chance for public input. I'm comfortable this is the right thing to do. I am really comfortable and actually most excited about the fairness and putting the decision in the, in the hands of each household. There are positive actions that households can take to make it less expensive for them. And if they don't take that, it probably will be more expensive for them. Though overall, the households are gonna save money with this program.
John?
Thank you. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about why I think it's good and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about why I think it's not now. I've talked about this before, that in my mind, it's sort of like a four-legged stool. One is the economics of it. One is the fairness of it. One is the environmental impact of it. And the last one is how do we control those people that are coming in from out of town? Are getting stickers discounted because a senior buys farming gives it to a family member that would have paid full price? We have nine hundred and twenty-eight single-family homes in town. About five hundred and ninety stickers are sold for those houses. So the, the difference between the five ninety and the nine twenty-eight is people who go outside and hire a trash company. The economics is that if we were to move from the nineteen hundred thirty-six pounds that we're doing currently and got towards the thousand sixty-six pounds that the rest of the state is doing, we'd save some hundred and eight hundred sixty pounds roughly. And if you figure that if you can put that poundage, the difference into the recycle bins, it's going to save us somewhere around eighty, ninety dollars a ton. And when I've worked the numbers through figuring the pounds into tons, et cetera, it comes out to around twenty-two thousand dollar reduction in cost. Which basically pays for some of the attendance. The, so in a sense, I'm, I'm for it. I think that makes sense. I think where we've fallen down is that we haven't effectively reached out to the citizenship in, in total. Even now, when I look at the number of people on here, and I know there's a few people on here that were on the last one, we probably maybe reached out to fifty people total. At the library, I think you heard from the seniors, these people are not on Zoom. And they're, they're having troubles with computers, et cetera. So anything that works with technology is kind of a, something that's gonna have to be taught to them, or we have to figure out how to educate them in a way that they can understand it. I do think we need to reach out more by, one, I would suggest that we go to the transfer station and that we talk to the people. I would like to, I would be more than willing to do that. I think we need better signage. The signage now in fairness to the highway, we really haven't taken a look at how to make this, but it's gotta be more graphic. I looked at plastic, what I could throw away and what I couldn't. Turns away, I can throw away anything except a number seven on the plastic can or bottle. To find that number seven takes a little work. And for sure, if it's anybody with a disability or a senior, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a major hiccup for them. So I think the, I think we're gonna have to move this at some point. And we just have to do a better job of reaching out telling the people in a way that they can understand. I, I do not believe we should cram it down their throats. I would love to see us have some sort of a non-binding referendum or a go-to-town meeting, but I do think we're in fairness, the people are gonna pay for it. And they ought to have a strong voice in how it's paid for. So that's where I'm coming from. You're muted, Christine.
Thank you, John. We did have another question in the chat. I'm not sure, Rob, if you're able to answer that question about, it was a suggestion about checking IDs?
Well, you can't really check everyone's ID that's at the transfer station. I mean, that, that's not really a plausible solution. The transfer station guys are gonna have to stop and pretty much hassle every person that comes through there until they remember them. You know, I need your ID. It's not.
Well, it's, it's the sticker, isn't it, Rob? I mean.
The sticker, yes. When the resident comes in, they have to provide proof that they live in Plington, use their vehicle registration. They come in with that. If they have two vehicles and they have both registrations, they can buy two stickers. Second sticker can end up on somebody else's car.
But in
It does happen.
Fairness to Deborah's question.
Okay.
You don't wanna fight to break out in the transfer station, obviously. But why couldn't they take the sticker number down of those people who abuse it? And in the past, that's been referred back up to us at some point.
You could. You know, that's not really, now we gotta have special meetings and stuff to reprimand some residents in town and then it becomes a big problem. It's just easier to, to go this route and everything kind of places itself.
Even, even with this route, what if they continue to throw bags in?
Well, they, they won't be able to throw in non-town bags, the, the non-pay-as-you-throw bags.
Why?
Because they'll be turned away at, at that point.
That's the point. They're not doing it now. And in the way the zoning regulation or the regulation is written, only bags are supposed to go into the dumpsters for trash.
Correct. Correct.
I'm sorry, Christine. I should.
Yep, no worries, John. All right. So, Colleen or Rob, could you answer if, when the town were to take action on the program, how, how soon would we implement it?
April first. I'd be selling the stick, I'm selling the stickers regardless of which way it goes. Effective January third. Their old stickers are good till March thirty-first. They cannot get into the transfer station with their old stickers after March thirty-first. So starting April first, they're gonna need the new sticker, whichever way it goes.
All right. Thank you, Colleen. So in the event the, the board was to go with this program, we've got part of November, December, January, February, and March to do some serious education on pay as you throw?
Yes, we could do that, but I'm gonna need a decision in order to, the grant, I need to, I have certain filing dates of certain things to finalize the grant and get the grant that has to be spent by the end of June. But those, that all has to be in by the beginning of January.
Okay.
Colleen, can I just speak to that for a minute?
Yeah.
I don't see why we, if we made a decision to say we we brought that out to June thirtieth, we'd have to absorb three months before we go in the way we're going. In other words, the stickers that are in place now would be allowed to go an extra three months.
Correct.
Which means that would show up in the budget, obviously. But on the other hand, one, it puts us on a fiscal year, but it gives us more time. I feel like I'm being pushed into a corner that we have to have stickers by January first.
I sell, I start selling the stickers by January, January third. So I have to know if I'm selling them at three hundred and forty dollars a piece or if I'm selling them at forty-five and sixty-five dollars a piece.
Right. What I'm suggesting is that they would be sold April first.
So we're not making any money for three months, anything at all. That's up to you, not me.
Okay, we got another question in the chat and that was so are the attendants going to stand by the dumpster during the time the station is open? Rob?
The transfer station attendants will have to be out there substantially more in the beginning to, to police this and get everyone coaxed into the process of pay as you throw. I mean, everyone makes that comment. The transfer station building was built so you can see what's going on from the inside. If you stand inside that building, there's a window on one side, you can see all, all the recyclables. And then a door and a window on the other side, you can actually see both compactors. It was built around being able to be inside and still being able to monitor what goes on.
But Rob, it would seem that they would be spending a lot more time, boots on the ground when, if we were to implement this program because there's gonna be an education period.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
If Russ Kiersted is still on board, if he could speak, he, he had a lot to do, from what I understand, with Duxbury's implementing this program. He may, if he's available to say something, he could speak to it.
All right. Russell, are you still on the call?
I think that they hung up a little while ago.
Drat. Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Colleen. All right. So my feelings on this program are, I believe it's a fair program as well. It's weight-based where everyone would be responsible for the, their, the trash they're generating. The recyclable part isn't gonna change. It's just what's going in the compactor. This would eliminate the abuses that we have alluded to tonight because everything's gonna have to go in the bag. And if people choose to, to put ten bags in every time they go to the transfer station every other day, that's fine because they're paying for it. So it's no longer gonna be subsidized by, by everyone else, their sticker costs. So I am in favor of the program. I think that we just are, you know, I understand the need for education. I understand that it may be kind of a pain in the neck if we were to go with this program in the, the startup, because there is gonna be a lot of education. You are gonna have to get new trash bags. But I think really this is the best way for the town to go based on the current climate with trash and the need to do a better job of recycling. And we've gotta keep our costs down. We just can't keep throwing money into the dumpster to, to pay for increased trash. Money can be much better used in other town areas, programs, than going towards trash. And this just seems like it's gonna be a self-sufficient program that will allow us more money to keep the tax dollars to productive programs rather than having them being hauled out of town in the dumpster.
Christine?
Yep.
Hi, this is Art Morin. And I know Russell isn't on the call right now, but I was the one that Russell was speaking with at the transfer station. Excuse me, when he related what happened in the town of Duxbury when they went to pay as you throw. He told me that he was hauling about a hundred tons a week out of Duxbury Transfer Station. They went to pay as you throw. And he said the tonnage dropped to a little, excuse me, a little over fifty tons a week. So that's almost in half. Because they went to pay as you throw. That's a huge savings. And then that's from somebody that worked right there in Duxbury, a neighboring community. So that, that's all I wanted to add is because Russ isn't here right now on the, on the call.
All right. Thank you, Art. All right. Any other last comments? I think for me personally, I feel like I'm ready to take action on this.
Christine, I, I'd like, not necessarily to thwart any further discussion, but I think we are ready to make a motion and I'd like to put the motion out there that we ratify the decision of the Board of Health and the Highway Department to move forward with a pay as you throw program at the transfer station.
All right. Go ahead, John.
I don't see the haste to do this. I think we have time. I think we need to talk to a lot more people. I think we need a lot more input. And I don't believe we should be voting this tonight. It may be the right thing to do, but we, we've got a lot more to do when, to find out. We haven't talked about how seniors, et cetera, work of disabled people, how they're going to use the sickest sticker bags, et cetera. I, I just feel like, you know, we've talked to maybe fifty people. I think the reason we're rushing this is because we don't wanna talk to the broader constituency, if you will. And I think we have the time. We should take two months and just talk it out with people by being in front of them. And Zoom is not the way that most of these people talk to us. They talk to us by being person to person. So I'm, I'm not in favor.
I'm gonna respectfully disagree and I, I think we've worked pretty hard on getting the information out there. We've offered opportunity after, after opportunity for citizen input. The stuff's been on the town website. It's been on the social media page. We put an ad in the newspaper. Within the last month, there are two times that top headline in the newspaper was about this. There have been posted meetings. We've had in-person sessions. We've had Zoom sessions. We've had the meeting tonight. We've given people the opportunity to, to give us their input to sway us in either direction. And I think we've done a good job of that.
I absolutely disagree. I think we've only basically used Zoom. And I think it's because we don't wanna go out and talk face to face and get the criticism that's gonna come with this decision.
I have a, just a comment about that. And, you know, I'm, I grew up in Plinton and I still have family members that are there and both of them are, you know, my father's gonna be seventy-eight and my uncle is eighty-four who can't drive. And so he can't get to a lot of these in-town meetings and he doesn't have access to computers. So having it on the town website, having it on the social media pages for some of the older residents is still not the way to get this out to them. And my uncle only knew about it because we have, my dad and I happened to be talking about it when we went with him. And he goes up to the town home because he gets the, the food every week from, in the social citizen and the, he uses the, the senior citizens bus. And I just think that, I do have to agree with John a little bit, that I think we rely on, especially with the pandemic, we rely on websites and social media and Zoom more than we realize sometimes. And I'm at fault for it too with my job, that sometimes we forget that some of these senior citizens don't, or the older residents in town don't have access to. or the older residents in town don't have access to this. And I think it's fair to have other, other people weigh in that are not on, like, a meeting like this. I just think it's to bring it out to everyone. And my dad reads the newspapers, and he was just telling me that he doesn't remember seeing anything. And he scours the newspapers for anything about Plimpton, and he doesn't remember. He only saw it when I mentioned it. So I think it's not reaching as many people as we may think.
All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, um, there was a question in the chat. It says, "I think having it as a town meeting would be a democratic way to deal with the change." Um, I agree. I said that's something I've wrestled with as well, but, um, democracy is, you have elected us, and if you don't like what, um, the three members of this board do, then, um, you certainly can, um, vote against us, or, um, you know, run, um, get other people to run. But I think that, um, you've entrusted us to make this, um, decision, and that, um, I feel like that we have done a pretty decent job, um, educating as well. Like, is it perfect? Absolutely not. I think we could have done, um, done more. Maybe we should have put something out in the, um, the warrant for the special that was, um, that talked more about this. But, um, I'm not afraid to take criticism. I never have been, but I think this is the right decision for the town, so. My opinion is buck stops here. I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is, and I think we need to give this a try. And, um, if it doesn't work, then this isn't set in stone. But I think that, um, that this is the right decision for the town, and that we're just delaying it by to get more buy-in for the right decision. And I think that's all it is, is just trying to make this so it's an easier decision, so that maybe people aren't, um, upset with us. But, um, this is, in my opinion, in the best interest of the town, and I think we just need to rip the Band-Aid off and do it. So, um, we've got a motion out there from Mark to ratify the, um, Board of Health and Transfer Station vote to, um, to move to the pay-as-you-throw program. Mark, I will, um, second your motion. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainer?
No.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we will ratify the, um, the pay-as-you-throw, uh, vote taken by the Board of Health and the Transfer Station. And I think, um, going forward, we need to work very hard at educating the people about this program, and we have got, um, a couple of months to do it. So, um, that will be a, um, a challenge for us, and we need to step up and, um, and do this right. So, and I have no problem with, um, taking the lead with that, setting up down at the transfer station, and, um, doing what we need to do to educate people about, um, the program and, um, recycling.
Christine, um, might I just, um, uh, for the board, thank Todd for all his work along the way? Um, and thank Rob and Colleen and Art. Um, even more to thank all the people that have come tonight and offered their input. Uh, um, I think we really appreciate that. Um, we have many, many, many meetings, that it's just the three of us or the four of us, and albeit this is a somewhat challenging topic, uh, it's nice to have a robust discussion. So thank you, everyone that's come tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, um, it's so important that, um, that everyone comes out and voices their opinion, and, um, it's, um, wonderful that, um, we've had, uh, so much discussion about this. So, appreciate everybody coming, and, um, there's gonna be a lot more, um, opportunities to discuss this, um, in the days to come with education, and, um, we will, um, be leading that charge. So, thank you all for coming. And, um, we'll, um, we'll move on to our next topic, which is, um, warrants paid. So, Bree, do you want to report on the warrants paid?
Hello?
Hello?
I do not have that picture, and I apologize to you.
Okay. All, all right. That's all right. So we'll hold that, um, until, um, our next meeting where you can report on that. Okay, Liz, Town Administrator's Updates. No worries, no worries, Bree. Okay, Town Administrator's Updates.
So, I've been busy working on special town meeting preparations, coordinating the various motions between Town Council and the Moderator. Uh, and as the Moderator mentioned when he was on our meeting earlier this evening, we will be having one of our standard, um, pre-town meeting walkthroughs that we typically do. Um, and that gives us an opportunity to coordinate with Area 58, make sure that everybody is, um, properly set up for everything. Um, also, I've coordinated with Alan Wheelock, and he's planning to join us at our December 5th meeting, um, to talk a little about the Bylaw Review Committee and all the good work that they've been doing. Um, he had sent out a really nice update on everything that they've done to date. And I thought that was a really effective means of communicating with people, um, really all of their efforts and the culmination of some of that. Um, it's one of those things, everybody knows that they're a hard-working bunch, but I see it on paper, um, was very impactful. So, I think that that would be beneficial for us to have him in. And hopefully by then, he's able to report if any town departments have got back to them as far as some suggestions for, um, future projects for them to look at. Um, and then in correspondence, we are being the, um, recipients of a donation from the town of Whitman, and it's a 2002 Ford van. And it's being donated to our fire department, um, largely for use by our SERC team that the chief is working hard on getting, um, up and running. So that's a team of community, um, emergency response, uh, individuals. And this van would be able to transport items places, like say, for example, even for Memorial Day, bringing chairs or tents, um, things like that. And it's going, so the SERC team is a regional effort. Uh, I think we might wanna have the chief into a future meeting to update you on the progress of him getting that group reinvigorated. But what the van, um, would do, it wouldn't service just Plimpton, because SERC is a regional effort. So any maintenance costs for the van, um, I plan is that those would be shared. So it would be very minimal cost to bring this vehicle onto the fleet. Um, it would really only need the liability coverage. And, um, and also too, to answer, just because John had some questions earlier, um, the vehicle would be stored outdoors, so it's not a situation where we're gonna need additional storage space for it. Um, we are aware of its age. It is an older vehicle. Um, there would be no plans to replace it once it reaches the, its useful life. It's not the type of thing that we're adding a vehicle and would have a need to keep it, um, keep replacing it, um, if that were the case. It's being viewed as more, more or less a bonus vehicle. Um, but nonetheless, it would be great if you could take a vote that just authorizes us to sign to receive this donation from the town of Whitman.
So, Liz, just to confirm, the, uh, insurance costs, the maintenance costs are shared by multiple towns?
All right, so we would be the owners, so we would insure it, and then the chief would be working on an option with some of the regional partners, maybe like they pay for the oil changes or the fuel or that. Um, so we're talking like, I don't know, a few hundred dollars a year, if that. Um, very minimal, but it would be helpful for the SERC team to have access to something of this nature, um.
So-
Mike, go ahead, man.
Uh, or, or just to finish up, so assuming there were a major mechanical problem, I, um, um, this thing would get rethought as to whether it was time to just retire this thing.
Correct, correct. At that point, we would probably be looking at disposition of surplus property. Um, we, we have no intention of spending any significant dollars as far as the vehicle is concerned. Um, it's more of a bonus gift, so to speak, and I think it could have the potential to serve us well, hopefully, for a few years, but if it reaches the end of its useful life prior to then, then so be it.
Um, being a little old myself, I just noticed that a 20-year-old car, um, might be having some wear and tear on it as well.
Yeah.
My, uh, question was really around, you know, between the federal government, state government, there's a lot of things that are being handed out, and that we, we, the Board of Selectmen, might wanna have a discussion around what we accept, because it puts pressure on to start to say, where do we store it? How do we keep it? And I just feel like we wanna think through what we accept. But I'm, I don't have a problem with this one, because if in fact it turns out to be a dog, in a couple of years, we just get rid of it, and there's no impetus to have to go and get another one.
All right, so are you guys ready to take a vote on this, then? John and Mark?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we sign to receive the vehicle donation from Whitman of the 2002 Ford van.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay. All right, um, what else you have for us, Liz?
Um, that does it for my updates.
Do you have anything in correspondence?
That was my only correspondence item.
All right, I'll share, um, correspondence that I received from, um, Sharon Clark. And she is the, um, Chair of the, um, Redevelopment Authority in the town of Carver, and we've been, um, working with them closely on the project uh, behind the, the Shaw's Building. Um, so she said she wanted to let us know that we were notified by Hillwood today that they've terminated their contract with Route 44 for the North Carver Project. She said, "From the information I have, um, there was an issue about extending the agreement, and, um, the, um, the owner wasn't willing to do that, um, for the, um, appeal period for their new bylaws, which won't be, I don't think they expect them to be approved until, um, January, I think it was." So, she said she would keep us informed if, um, any new development, uh, or any new developers approach Route 44. But for the time being, um, the, uh, the current, uh, project is, um, has been terminated. All right, so how about, um, minutes? We've got minutes from 10:17 and 11:05. Did you guys get a chance to see those?
Yeah, they were fine.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 10:17, as written by, um, Bree, and 11:05 that Mark put together, um, as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second, John, and roll call vote, uh, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay. All right, um, so our next meeting is, um, it's like the, um, the special town meeting, to be held at the Denit, and then, um, the following meeting will be on 12:05. So, um, we will, uh, see everybody at, uh, the special town meeting at the Denit. All right, so, um, we'll finish up with selectmen's raves. John or Mark, do you wanna go first?
Uh, sure, I'm glad to go. Uh, um, my rave is for Tricia Dederman, who, uh, in last week's, uh, uh, Plimpton Halifax Express, uh, it was noted that she, uh, received, uh, certification from the Massachusetts Town Clerks, uh, Association, certified in Mass Municipal Clerk designation, um, uh, uh, in response to, uh, educational courses she had taken, an aptitude test she'd passed, and, uh, so, uh, kudos to, uh, Tricia for continuing the work and, uh, to continuing to get wiser along the way. We appreciate it.
All right, John?
So my rave is for the weather. It's been beautiful. I've enjoyed it. Hope it continues.
All right, my rave would be for, um, all of the, the seniors that attended the discussion of, um, affordable housing. It was great to get so much, um, feedback and, um, exchange of really good ideas. Um, it just, it was, um, it was really a pleasant experience. John, thank you for inviting me to attend, and, um, and I'm so grateful for, um, for the discussion, and then some really good suggestions about, um, pay as you throw and, um, and educating, um, residents as well. So, a lot of good, um, I felt came out of that meeting. So, thank you for, um, for everybody that attended. All right, being that we've got no other business, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, so we'll see you at town meeting. Good night, everybody.